...form of state's work is Evan Craig, Councilman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Stewart.
That was great. I thought we had a real good policy, thank you, much for that reason, I worship. And I thought we just pause to remember Evelyn Craig, a long time employee of the city. We ask you to bless our family and keep it in prayers. We ask that your blessing upon her, when she really needed it, because she went through a lot of pains. Now Father God, we actually bless this council meeting tonight. Let us make the right decision in Jesus' name, prayer. Amen.
Thank you, Councilperson. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Riffey called me on Friday, we'd already publicized agenda. He has to be taken off the agenda, his public comments, which I have. And we'll move down to item number five, approval of the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, Councilman, I have not, and I honestly will admit, I have not had a chance to look at the financial policies and purchasing policy. I think we all need to spend a lot of time purchasing policy, thirty-five pages long. And so I apologize for my ineptness, but I want to move those two items for the time being. And with that, I would entertain the motion that the consent agenda be approved.
Shall we?
Have a second.
Second.
In a second.
Okay, hold on, hold on, Miss Pryor. First, we need to approve the agenda, and you want to take off those two items?
Yes. Okay.
So motion, please.
To, alright, to approve the agenda. Uh, the consent agenda.
What, no, the regular agenda.
The irregular agenda, alright, let's do that. Thank you, alright, let's approve the irregular agenda, let's start over. Entertain the motion.
Shall we?
Okay, have a second.
Second.
Okay. Anybody have any question? All those in favor of the agenda? Okay. Now, thank you, Janice.
Yep.
Bring me down to consent agenda. On items D and E, I have not had an opportunity, as I told you, to look at this. It's too important, there's a lot of information in there. And so I'm asking that we remove those two items and approve the consent agenda, with the exception of items D and E, and I entertain the motion.
Shall we?
Second.
And a second. Anybody having a question? Any reservation, any comments? Here none, Miss Pryce, please restate the motion and the second.
The motion is to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of removing item number D and item number E, but all of the rest of them are approved.
Okay, would you please vote?
All in favor except one.
Okay. One vote, okay.
That's not present.
Oh, oh, okay. And I apologize, each councilman, but I just have not had a chance to look at this in toto, and we're gonna just postpone that, but we will bring it back to your attention. And I think when we do, ladies and gentlemen, it will be an individual item, individual items for consideration. Okay, Mr. Hurry, uh, let's move down to item number seven.
You'll turn to your summary information on JAP. This is a cleanup item for zoning. It's a presentation of a zoning quest by Brad, Brad Nobles, on behalf of AAVD Investments LLC pertaining to the subject property located on Highway twenty corridor. Both myself, Adam and myself, in working with the individuals, we have historic zoning on the property. This is the Hill Road realignment. This is what the locals know as the Maze property. This is our subject tract, which has a asymmetrical design, layout. What we found in the due diligence and working with the applicants, when this was marketed by the bank-owned, excuse me, representatives for the bank, they showed the property being C2. In essence, from the historical records, we still have a small residual area that is owned R seventy-five, prior to the South Point property, when it was a PUD development. The PUD was by Fox Development, and it was owned R seventy-five, R one hundred, M one, and C three. Your South Point property occupies the area that is the C three and C two. So lessons going back is we then have a small pocket, this portion of the property here, that is owned R seventy-five, because the front portion of the property is owned C two, by the way, at the Maze outpost. So that's why we have the situation here. And then we will go to the screen. Fred's guiding me, we're enjoying this resource. Here's your subject property. Uh, yeah, we're having fun with this in the office, so appreciate Fred's support. What you have is the subject property there, and you see there's two areas that we have. And this is going to allow for us to complete the street scape, and it'll be at your west boundary of your, of the Highway twenty corridor, that includes your South Point development. So again, right now, it's raw land, there's no development. But again, you can see behind, this is your Billings and South Point project, and this is the intersection that's showing on the screen now. So pretty much, very straightforward, just to clean up the zoning, and allow for a new retail site to be marketed by Adam.
Alright.
The applicant was, Mr. Nobles had a conflict in his schedule, so he was unable to be here. It's pretty much very simple, straightforward, I explained it to Councilman Elrod, and then also was getting in touch with Councilman Marner, and so pretty much straightforward.
Cam, have you, am I kidding you? You have any questions?
No, and I haven't had an opportunity to look at this quite yet, but wait, if you don't mind,
Absolutely. So we just wanted to go over today, sort of give you an understanding of the situation, and the, sort of, the questions on the zoning, because if you were looking at it from another perspective, like, well, how did we get here? And that was the main thing, we wanted to give you the historical information.
Does anyone else? Anybody have any questions?
No, I just, um, certainly, I would, give Councilman Mark the opportunity to have the time to look at it and go over it, you know? But we need to do things like this as soon as possible, because it does allow Adam to move forward, you know, with whatever can and can't be done, so, the sooner we can get this done, the better.
Okay. And ladies and gentlemen, we'll come back on the twenty-first. Cam, and give you another opportunity, we're going through our routine, you know what that is.
Mayor, just before we move on to that one, I apologize. Rodney, I just want to make sure I understand. Basically, all of this going on here is that the tract has a double zoning designation.
Yes, that is correct, which you and I would, we're just doing something.
Okay. And so right now, it's got C two and R seventy-five, and so all we're doing is just going so that it's properly just got that one zoning classification attached here.
That is correct.
Alright, so really and truly, it is, I think, but I certainly would.
Yeah, it's a cleanup, because what we were having and working with Fred has guided us then, what would occur if we weren't taking these steps is Adam would be marketing a property, and then we would get to eventual offer on the property, and we would have a wait.
Right.
Okay. Any other comment? Statified, Cam? We will, we'll talk about it again on the twenty-first. Item number B, Ms. Vincent says postpone that item to seven twenty-one, which we will take up at some time, she's busy in work.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
If I can say now.
Yes, ma'am.
We will confer with the two at-large councilpersons, but they're trying to meet on the nineteenth. So, um, I will let you know the time, I'm just waiting for confirmation from the homeowners.
Okay. Oh, hey Fred, I couldn't find you. Let's move down to item number eight.
Whoa, 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 whoever y'all talking about, I missed whatever.
We're postponing, oh, she's talking about a special meeting with Homer.
Regarding the North Valley, it was just an announcement, Ms. Janice, I'm sorry. But this will be postponed until twenty-first, the twenty-first of July.
Yeah, tonight was just.
They're gonna have nothing.
Right, yeah, tonight was just that there was any updates on it, and we said we have an agenda, but it's postponed to July twenty-first.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Garden.
Uh, very quick. As you know, we adopted our fiscal year fifteen budget, uh, last now, and as part of that, um, we discussed increasing the military rate. But as we got our digest, we recognized that there would have been a need if we were gonna even stay put, and I'll give more detail regarding setting the military rate, and how we go about that process. Uh, so tonight, just gonna basically kind of give you guys a quick overview, a couple of slides, you got a copy of it in front of you. Uh, just going over what procedures we're gonna have to do, and go through that, just how you're military, what it's like on the meeting, um, as we look to know it's applying military, um, either way. Like I said, we adopted a budget FY fifteen, and a lot of that process was the proposed increase in the military from four, four point three eight mils to four point nine, nine mils. Uh, and just based on that requirement alone, the state law requires you'll be able to have three public hearings. Uh, and we're in the process of basically putting those dates together, working with Ms. Pam Clark, over at the county tax assessors office. Uh, and I think these behind a calendar, giving you some proposed dates for the meeting, which is, was recommended by Pam's partner, giving us the military. And in your pocket for this, you should have a copy of, um, the staff information, just kind of illustrating to you what the, what the process was, how we got to this, to look at the military rate process, and then, if you have any other questions, we'll go through that. But what we found out when we got our digest, we got a proposed digest back on, preliminary digest back on June twentieth, which showed that the property values are basically going from right around six hundred and ten million to seven hundred and sixteen million. Well, that was preliminary. And then we got the actual digest earlier today. We recognized that when we did our budget, we did our budget predicated basically on about six hundred and seventy-four million dollars, is where we estimated the, but the tax digest would be. Well, you're equal, thanks to the finance staff, we were pretty much on real off, just about fifty dollars, between what we were estimating the digest would be and what the tax assessors gave. And you'll see that highlighted in your, in your pocket.
That's before bills? Is that?
Not, not as before, this is all before bills. So in essence, when we came back, what they did was look at the military, and basically, part of that process was to show what the rollback would be, and if we didn't have any increase in property tax, or we didn't decide to keep the military and roll it back, that's when it would roll back to, that's basically, in essence, staying where we are on our property tax digest, so about two point eight million dollars on the property tax, uh, is what that was, that is proposed to be at four point oh two. And if you look in your, in your pocket, you will see those numbers highlighted for you, that kind of illustrated inside people that means. Uh, and so at the third meeting of those three public hearings is when you actually will go to adopt the military. So the two, the three meetings are public hearings, to get input from the public. The third one's the same, but at that third meeting is when you will actually set the military.
Will we, um, will we need to keep it at the four point nine?
Uh, yes, ma'am, and, and that's illustrated in your pocket, if you open it, you look in your pocket, that I gave you, you will see an area highlighted in blue.
We're in black.
Not that, in, inside your, your jacket. In your jacket.
Mr. Fred, actually, it's in gray, it was not done in color.
Oh, I'm sorry, in gray.
It's in gray.
Mine's, mine's is in blue, everybody else is in gray.
I'm sorry, the one fourth will do the color. We're in blue.
I didn't think I, I didn't think I'd come.
We're in, we're in blue.
Yes. So in essence, what you're looking at is when we, when we, when the staff has got this, the estimated military rate, we were six hundred and seventy-nine million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. Uh, we applied a military rate to that amount, we came up with an estimated level of two point nine, eight, two point nine five million dollars. The FY, the FY fifteen budget, uh, obviously, in terms of the property tax in order to fulfill the requirements for an increase in public safety, would require a three point three seven million dollars. Uh, and so with that, you basically, the next, next rollover, you will see that we applied a military rate of four point nine nine, that brought us basically uneven with the requirements to fund the public safety outside of what was recommended previously, at three point, uh, seven oh, is what it would take to fund it. Uh, in essence, just looking at the military rate, those two military rate in and of itself would be right around the four point seven increase, four point one. When then the county actually gave us the new digest today, we revised this, because we originally started with the seven hundred and sixteen, no, sixteen hundred million. Uh, we revised it, and as you can tell, our number's pretty close. Very close to what they were proposing, it's six hundred and seventy-four million, seven hundred, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty. Uh, and then you apply the existing military rate, but our rollback, just at its current level, that would match you right around two point nine six million, which is still under, this is about four hundred thousand, I know what you would need at the three point three, to fund the public safety. So, in essence, and then right next to that, if you just apply the actual rollback military to the new digest, what you'll see is that you have a shortfall of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, because that, the military at point four oh two would only match you two point seven million in property tax. The difference between the military standard where it is, and a four point oh is a reduction of about ninety, nine point one percent reduction. What you see on the file highlighted in blue, is the military that was recommended as part of the adoption of the budget. Initially, when we look, when we're looking at the seven hundred and sixteen million digest, we were actually lowering that amount from four point nine to four point seven, just to meet the three point three seven million. But obviously, when they give the revised digest, the revised digest, ten hundred bucks, was a sixty-four thousand dollars difference between what we were proposing, estimating, what they're actually saying the military is gonna be at. So there wasn't a really huge increase in the digest per se, percentage wise. Uh, and so what did that would mean if we look at the rollback versus what we are proposing? Basically, the difference between the four point nine and the four point oh is right around nineteen percent increase. And as you can tell, that would net basically just fifteen hundred dollars, uh, the nine, four point nine, it would match you just fifteen hundred bucks additional above what was required to fund the, um, the public safety as the budget be adopted. And the additional information you have is part of your pocket, is basically how to go about calculating the military, and send the digest, um, giving you a file of history, which will be part of the legal advertisement for the adoption of the budget. Under military, excuse me. And so that's your information that you have is part of that pocket. Um, let me talk about what that would mean for a house in McDonough, we give you this scenario a couple of months back. Um, what that would mean for a house of a hundred thousand, you tax at forty percent, the assessed value. Um, the current military rate right now, as we have it, at three point eight, will match you right around, a city, right around a hundred and seventy-five dollars, annuity and property tax. With the four point nine nine, it would be an additional of twenty-four dollars. It would bring it to a hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which in essence, on a monthly basis, is a two dollars and three cents addition. For a house of a hundred and fifty, you're looking at a thirty-six dollar increase between what they're currently paying now and what they would pay if the military was suggesting to four point nine nine. Thirty-six dollars and sixty cents, which is a three dollars and five cents a month increase. A house of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, would see an increase from one thirty-eight to four, from four hundred and thirty-eight to four hundred and ninety-nine, sixty-one dollar increase annually to five dollars and eight cents a month adjustment. And a house of two hundred and fifty would bring, would increase from six hundred and fourteen to six hundred and ninety-nine, which would be an eighty-five dollar increase, or seven dollars and twelve cents a month increase. And that's what it would mean to those houses in that category. Um, our, average household is right around, house price is right around a hundred and twenty-something thousand, so they'll be paying some additional between two, two fifty and three dollars addition. When we talk about the tax distribution, the city is by taxing one, one of the smallest, right around eleven, twenty, eleven percent of your dollar, if you would have buried that dollar out, goes to the city. Uh, Henry County gets about twenty-eight percent of that dollar. School get, school board gets around fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight percent of that. There's some, the numbers won't add up, obviously, because you still have an additional, as a city resident, you pay an additional of two mils, for whatever reason, to the Henry County water sewer authority, even though we currently provide one for a house of our city residents, all of our city residents still pay two mil for the, for the water. Kind of give you a history of military rate going back almost twenty years, what that looks like. Um, from ninety-five to two thousand and fourteen, where we've been, down, and somewhat going back up. Or you think about the city population back then, we were roughly around, you're somewhere between four thousand and five thousand people, and now we're twenty-two thousand people. And there's some things that have been on in these areas underlying the history. Obviously, I know for five oh two, oh three, we actually spent more in expenses than we brought in revenue.
What was the military rate in that dollar?
Five point oh.
Five, oh, I'm giving out that if I, this is astounding to me.
Yeah.
Because, um, I also, yeah. So, anytime I started, it's less than a half mil.
And so when you talk about where, where we are from, from jurisdictions that are almost similar in size to us, you know, we talked about McDonough, currently at four point three, going to four point nine, uh, Ripley at eight point six, Forest Park at fourteen point seven, Union City at fourteen, fifteen, Conyers at thirteen, Carrollton at four point six nine.
Mrs. City Administrator, do you know what the, um, mileage radius for any three cities, Stockbridge, Lucas Crowe, Camp? Oh, that's right, okay. I'm sorry.
They're zero.
They're zero, because they have no.
They, they live in five or six times, but they do the common on that part.
Would you, um, what, what percentage would that be?
There, if you live in unincorporated Henry County, you pay right around fifteen, I think it is. Either twelve to twelve or fifteen, or somewhere in there. It's lesson with, with, uh, oh, no, excuse me. If you're in the city, you pay property taxes to the county at about twelve, and somewhere between twelve and fifteen, and then county, unincorporated county residents pays fifteen mils, and then it'd be twenty mils to the school board.
So, what, and I'm sorry, councilperson, within the scheme of things, McDonough Steel is substantially less than our neighboring cities.
Yeah, they collect property taxes. And we, we do this every year, to kind of illustrate, you know, where we are. Um, but we've changed this, we did some outside cities a couple of years ago, just to kind of show you all where we go. Even though, um, as we go back into the history, um, we actually, last year, we funded, and this is something I was expecting to, um, to fund the, um, citizens that this year asked about the increase, and I didn't stop and, not cutting, but in actual fact, we rolled, the military did roll back to four point eight, maybe four point three eight last year. And then we were still able to fund the four police officers last year. We are doing that, but now we're asking to fund additional firefighters, and it's just, obviously, we're not even trying to, I don't want to talk about which.
In ninety-five, the population had to be, what, around between three and four thousand people?
Oh, right.
And we were providing the services basically that we provide now. And now we are between twenty-three to twenty-five thousand, and we are below the mileage rate that serviced those people in ninety-five. And I understand the importance of keeping the mileage rate as low as possible at any given point. But, um, the mileage rate that was lowered during, um, the years where it was drastically lowered, we had a tremendous boom going up.
But you, but I'll tell you, you also, you also was taking money out of the water fund to balance.
Right. Yes.
Because the general fund was coming up short.
Right.
And that was because you were reducing your taxes as you were going, and at some point, those lines intersected each other, and you ran basically expenses above revenue.
And they, and basically, they should have made pretty consistent instead, yeah.
This first hand, probably the yields that we have to, to raise it, instead of all that coming yields?
The last, the last increase was twenty-eleven, the fourth item was twenty-eight.
But, but what's so dramatic is ninety-five, ninety-six.
Right.
And ninety-seven, it was four point five oh, and now it's four point nine nine. And I know I first came on council in ninety-seven, so we're talking about less, very little, you know, increase overall, and you're talking about tremendous. You're talking about twenty thousand people more.
You there, Fred?
That we're providing service for.
So in essence, tonight, we just give you guys a update of what you have to do. Um, the calendar, the calendar, twenty, give you some proposed dates, so then we can have a call on these, um, public, public hearings, public hearings. I think they're showing the, if I remember wrong, the ninth, the sixteen, and the twenty-third?
Well, and I think Janice actually wants to review the specific dates.
Oh, oh, no. You see on your calendar, we can have them on the sixteenth and the twenty-third, seventeenth and the twenty-fourth, eighteenth and the twenty-fifth. Those are the magical days, and you can have it on the sixteenth and the twenty-fourth, you know, but you got to have a week apart.
That's the hour of time.
But, but this is the window that we've got to have three public meetings.
I like the proposed dates.
I was gonna ask, is this, is this proposed date good for you?
That, that, that is what Pam is suggesting, the sixteenth and the twenty-third, does that work for y'all?
It would make it work.
Okay, okay, now look, on the sixteenth, you got a nine AM and a six PM.
Yeah.
Two on that day, and then, do you want a six PM on the twenty-third?
I'm, I'm not gonna be here that week at all, so, unfortunately, I won't be here that week.
What about it, ladies?
I, I, I just, this is VOC, that's, that's Board of Education.
Board, Board, Board of Commissioners?
Yeah.
But Pam was just giving that as examples of the dates that we could actually look at, setting them.
What about it, ladies, at nine o'clock in the morning? Is that, it's not?
I would just suggest that.
At six o'clock, yeah.
Either six or seven, because most citizens are not gonna be able to come out for a nine o'clock meeting unless they're retired or independently wealthy.
Okay, well, now if we don't have the nine o'clock, then we've got to have a third night meeting. See, we've got.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, can this meeting be a, a six or seven o'clock meeting?
At the night can, but we still have to have the nine, eight, well, I mean.
Well, we have one nine, wait a minute.
We've got one nine.
Yeah, the, there's a nine.
Let me see.
Oh, oh, yeah, if we do that on the sixteenth, then on the twenty-third, we can.
Yeah, I'm just saying, can we make that twenty-third meeting later, so that some folks who haven't come to these other meetings will have an opportunity to come?
So which, what time?
Seven o'clock.
Is that alright with you, ma'am?
I'll make it work.
Okay. Okay, so.
Seven.
So we're gonna advertise on the sixteenth at nine AM, and on the sixteen, at sixteen.
Right.
And then we're gonna advertise on the twenty-third at seven PM. Is that, is that, everybody understands that?
Gives everybody an opportunity to read.
Okay. Okay, now, we've got to put the rate in the paper in the morning. So do y'all, I mean, I'm just asking, do we need a motion, or are y'all all ready for us to go to four point nine nine seven? We have to put the max in the paper.
You need to have a motion.
Oh, yes.
Fred, you got any other comments?
That's it, sir.
But your recommendation is four point nine nine.
Well, the budget was adopted predicated on the four point nine nine.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, entertain the motion.
A motion.
Second. Okay, who made the motion?
Oh, Cam, thank you, Cam. Thank you, Cam.
And then Slade, okay.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
I, I have a great question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, Mr. City Administrator, on, on your sheet that says FY fifteen, mileage highlights, and I know this is internal, but we're posting so many of our documents on, on the website. The only request that I have is, under the budget, budget.
The bullet.
That says at the third hearing, mayor and council adopts the mileage rate, if we could say that mayor and council vote on the military?
Yes, ma'am.
Just some folks will say whatever they say sometimes. I know we normally speak in the affirmative, but, um, it is a, but.
Any other comments? Miss Pryce, you have a motion in a second, on the floor, would you please share it, and then we'll call.
May I?
Oh, yes, ma'am, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If, um, if by the twenty-third, anything should change within our, our budget, that would cause the mileage rate to be lower, are we illegal if we do a lower number?
Oh, no, you can always go blue, you just can't go higher. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, dear.
Are you ready to read it?
No.
I'm sorry.
Cam just slipped that out.
She needs to be, she made the motion.
And, and do y'all need to include the hearings in the motion? Is that necessarily, you, you?
Why don't you, Janice, we've got them down for the, just to make sure I've got them right, the sixteenth at nine AM, and the sixteenth at sixteen, and the twenty-third at seven PM.
You, you want to add in the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor, y'all, be patient here a moment, and I think she has to leave her own. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Gardner, if you're posting anything, would you please post the historic, um, mileage rate?
Uh, it will be part of the presentation, it will be.
I think she was inside my head.
And, and not, and not only that, is there any way that you could add a population, um, bar in it?
Uh, I'll try, yes, ma'am.
I think that's one of the single most powerful tools that you, you've given to illustrate, um, because, yeah.
Yeah, my thought is, um, you know, what we were charging at one day, and what level the population was, and where we're back to, and what the population is now, I think is very important for the citizens to understand, and maybe, um, gives them a little better understanding of us trying to provide a level of service that, um, gives them a level of ongoing hope for, um, safety, as well as, um, as hope for, um, providing for the future in the way of public buildings.
Ms. Price, please share the motion in the second with us, and we'll call both, Cam's back.
Listen, just to make sure I got it right. The motion is for advertising the five-year history. The city will advertise four point nine nine seven for the two thousand fourteen mileage rate, and the public hearings are set for July sixteen, two thousand fourteen, at nine AM, July sixteen, two thousand fourteen, at six PM, and July twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, at seven PM.
Okay, I think we might need two motions, but anyway, we got the motion, uh, and that, well, that, that's troubling to me. If we really got two issues here, we got a, a, a date issue, and we got a mileage issue. To me, they're totally separate and distinct.
That's impressive, no, no problem.
You don't have a problem with that, too.
Okay, just, okay.
Yeah.
All right, the first motion is that Councilmember Cam made, and Councilmember Slender.
Right, right.
Second, is for advertising the five-year history. The city will advertise for the two thousand fourteen mileage rate, four point nine nine seven.
What we're gonna do, we're gonna take up the mileage rate first, and then I'll call on you, uh, motion in the second relative to the hearings we're gonna set. Those in favor of this, uh, uh, recommendation by our city administrator relative to, uh, whatever the mileage rate was, I think it's four point nine nine. Those in favor, please, signal by the raises of hand. Those in opposition. Those in opposition, and the motion carried, thank you so much. Now, let's move down to, uh, the, these hearings. Ladies and gentlemen, I am paying a motion relative to what we've all discussed for the, uh, for the date sixteen, nine, sixteen, twenty-third. So, thank you so much, Cam, the second.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cam. Anybody have any questions about the dates? And we want to encourage, as Ms. Vincent said, people to come, but unfortunately, through the years, uh, they don't. Maybe we, maybe this will be a new year, I hope it is. Ms. Price, share the motion and the second relative to our public hearings.
The motion for the public hearings for establishing the two thousand fourteen mileage rate will be July sixteen, two thousand fourteen, at nine AM, July sixteen, two thousand fourteen, at six PM, and July twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, at seven PM.
Okay, ladies, gentlemen, if you please vote at this time, those in favor, those in opposition, okay?
What, 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 okay, that's sixty-one.
Sixty-one, yes, ma'am.
May I just have one, one other, uh, request, when, when, uh, city administrator posts the twenty-year mileage rate history, could we include the, um, the, the administration with, during that time period? I know I have been here through, um, several of these administrations, and Mayor Copeland was mayor, but I've just been looking at this over a twenty-year period. I think we have two administrations present, one being that of, uh, Richard Craig, and the other being that of, um, Nina Copeland as well.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Gardner, uh, we're gonna move down to Adam and Mary now, and I'm gonna call on Ms., uh, Ms. Knight, relative to the McDonald's cemetery.
Yes, um, I had, um, discussed when we had our special call meeting, and we had decided that since it was not, um, it was not advertised as such, that we couldn't take any, um, action then, and what I had proposed at that time was that, um, we move forward to have, um, soil sampling, cleanup, and, um, and physical layout of the two lots that are on Macon Street, directly across from Wesley Chapel Church that the city presently owns, um, that we move forward to take care of those items and put those, um, pro, and put those lots up for sale. And that this be done in-house, since the, those two lots are on the front of the historical cemetery, and can only be laid out based on the layout of the historical cemetery. And this in no way would preclude the city from moving forward to get, um, um, a professional cemetery company that actually lays out a cemetery, especially since we're talking about not only doing a cemetery, but also a, um, mausoleum on the, uh, seven acres that we refer to as the, um, mer, um, mercy property. So, this would not preclude us from doing that, because this will be a new section, a new layout, and we want to maximize that acreage, um, as we move forward, for our citizens to be able to have some place to look forward.
What we probably should have done some years back was keep it at that point, but then let it tie into lower on the other side. I mean, brown on the other side, but obviously, that's bridge under the water and the bridge. Um, they did agree, um, they did say, okay, are y'all gonna keep the roundabouts on the, on there? I said, no, I think we pretty much agreed that the roundabouts should be treated, treated separately, and that's kind of straightforward right now. But, we want to, I tell you, evaluate, you know, I mean, we, we want them to still hug that as, because definitely, remember, their recommendation to us, and what I recommended in the memo was, you know, it's best to move, it would be out these corners, out of the project, the roundabouts is part of the project. There, there's a potential that it's gonna get slowed down, a potential to defund it. But.
We didn't agree that those were out, but they have to make a decision on, and what we as a council have to make a decision on, is the Darce Street, because it affects the entrance to the park, and the park cannot move forward without having that set. We can't open it to the public or anything else in a proper manner, or give proper access to it. So, that, the round of, uh.
We agreed to go with alternate one, alternate one, and that's what the DOT recommended. Alternate one had red lights at each end. And they said if we made any change, that we're gonna move it to another funded year, and we don't know what funding year we're.
We don't know, they did not. They did not, and we can pull the record up on it, and we can listen to the tapes, and I'm really tired of everybody going to where it suits them, as opposed to what's actually said. And I've had the meetings and the discussions, and it's very clear that if we want, uh, there are things that have to be addressed where that is concerned, that's why it was put in the SPOS, why it was done with them, and they're aware of that. We don't have to have a roundabout there, and we do have to have some means of being able to get in and out of the park safely there.
We can take, take a look.
But, 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 but.
Go ahead, Fred, and we finish, we bring your conversations.
And it does not change.
But, 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 the, the roundabout we're discussing, because that's what the last, the very last conversation we had with them was, you know, the two roundabouts, and what I explained to them was that there was now some changes in relation to the roundabout, and what the impacts of the roundabout may be on the local businesses. They said, okay, and then I explained to them the issue of the median, and what that meant for two new businesses that came on board in the intervening twenty years without this project, and they really didn't know anything about it, and the potential impacts on their businesses. And we discussed the issue of the right full motion access, and what that would mean. They would bring that, they would evaluate that, but that's also part of what they wanted to hear, is part of the open house from these businesses. So, this gives everybody, uh, between, we got, basically, to get back on board on full.
So, we'll just do it.
So, that, that was, that was brought up, and so with that, um, I've asked them to, to obviously get their calendars clear, and let us know if the proposed dates, assumptions can, and the rest on the boss, they, they would do that in our conversation, in their conversation, but, uh, today. So, the goal is they'll give us, we'll get those dates out, figure those dates, to see if those dates are meaningful to us, and accommodate if we need to, but basically get this thing moved.
And so, we're gonna, we're gonna send a kind of a McDonald light, love to them.
Yeah, just, just basically saying, with what I just said just now, and say, yes, let's, let's move forward with the public meeting. We do not want to endorse the fine house currently until there's a public input anybody.
And that's what I recall, was being kind of the, the, the full contour of our decision, was making sure that we engage the community at this point, because everything else is historical.
And that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna email to all of you.
All the features.
I sent an email to all of you.
Fred, you, you have a draft, if those meetings or hearings, how we work all, will be July, August, September, further?
I, I think they're gonna be August, August, September is when they're probably gonna, giving us those dates. Um, I'm pushing for them to be given.
We got them. That's good, okay. And, uh, so you're gonna do, you've already drafted, you're.
So, I'm gonna draft that and send that off, I wanted to bring everybody, but I was supposed to give it to y'all last week, but obviously, it's, it's been by pretty quick.
And in my discussions, I made it very clear that the roundabout that we went for at Darce Street was because they had previously stated that it was impossible to put a red light there. But Darce Street is actually a, a longer distance from the railroad than is the switchback at Marion's Way. So, now that they are going to put that there, they can now easily consider within the department, and this is what they told me, the red light at Darce Street.
Okay, all right. Okay, Fred, you have anything else?
Uh, real quick.
Yes.
I'll be on, going on vacation on the twenty-third, and to the twenty days, I'll be driving across country. So, sure, and we're trying to do what you do for vacation, try to make it, um, goes to get across in two days. So, we'll see how that goes. Um, so, I'm just taking a nice air, just in visiting some friends and driving, um, without the family assisting me, so pray for me. Um.
Did you strangle the string in there, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I don't have a trick.
Uh, we got the, the cemetery, our, we closed, we got three firms, we got A, A Mac, A, capital A, capital M, capital E, capital C, uh, the Jiga Company, and Thomas Bryce and Associates, um, that have put in our piece for the design, our supply of the design. Um, I did get feel a lot of questions from some local folks for digging this in. Um, and then that, that's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Madam, attorney.
Uh, Mayor, just really quickly, um, I've, I've probably looked at this, but just so that you guys can kind of look at it, and just give it to me, and I'll just, um, around, um, I'll, just a little project, a project of mine, I've been thinking on putting together another agenda item summary sheet, cover sheet, we have now. Uh, and, and just the idea being to hopefully condense and to give you a more readable, useful form, that will tell you all the information you want right up front, uh, and the information the staff needs right up front. But, for instance, you know, is this something we need you to take action on, is it something we need you to spend money on? If it's something we need to spend money on, can we add money to the budget for it already? If so, where is that funding funded from? Uh, on the recommended action, that would be a place, and this is just, by the way, key side, it was a Guinea pig, I don't know where I was. But, uh, but the recommended action would be actually the language of a, of a specific motion, and we needed you to include specific language. And then, and then the last thing down at the bottom, um, the council action, that would be a way for us to sort of track things and make sure that it's getting, you know, being carried over. So, take a look at it, and see things that you want, like to see included that aren't there, or things that you think ought to be taken out, just let me know.
Great, exactly. And, and, and as I was telling you, hopefully, our goal is to generate this in an access database format. That way, at some point, we can query just about everything on here, from council action to, uh, specific KM deals, and it should pop up, all of this stuff here, so Janice makes general, Janice life way more easier. They're not having to go through paper searching for a lot of stuff to determine what an action was, we can do this, bring it in up.
So, good piece of work, thank you so much, thank you so much. Very concise.
Um, I, I just wanted to, um, bring up again our HVA dinner on July the seventeenth at the French Market. I just need a head count by Thursday, if you had any other to do.
Yeah, I'm getting ready.
That's almost to nail.
Real quick, maybe, um, we do have a meeting, we had a buddy to discuss, discuss SPOS, uh, on the.
Next weekend.
Eighth.
I believe so.
So, I'm, because.
I've got it on my calendar.
To discuss that, so I, I wanna make sure that, because I think we still have some opportunity to adjust our overall SPOS list, so.
That's right.
I know we have another meeting between now and then, but, but some of the email, just, I mean, if y'all wanna keep it, I didn't put down the six million, you all wanna put it back to seven, and I've seen additional projects again.
I think y'all cut it, cut it while I was out.
What do we have at that meeting?
Then it's the eighth, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I've got it on my calendar, it's next week.
Um, yes, it's, it's.
Thursday.
It's, uh.
You'll send that out, that'd be great.
July the eighth, to Buddy's office.
Nine, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock today.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Ms. Vincent.
Yes, sir.
Uh, welcome, any comments?
Thank you, a couple of things, first of all, um, I deeply agree that our prior, um, city clerk has, has transitioned with Evelyn Gray. Um, Mr. Janice, thank you for keeping us updated on, on her status. She was really, really a, a, a great person, and I enjoyed working with her during the time that I was here at, at the city. And just over the years, having communicated with her outside of the city at various times, she has remained to be a, a very, very good and, and person of great faith, so. I'm sorry to hear that she has left us. Uh, the second thing that I'd like to say, and I'll try to upbeat a little bit, but this was by far, in my opinion, one of the best GMA training sessions that I have attended. Excellence in design was a, a tremendously relevant subject matter. I got a lot of good information from talking to my colleagues, they've got a lot of good information. And one of the things that was most striking to me, as I was listening, uh, to, to several of the sessions, is the fact that McDonough really has some good bones. We haven't necessarily connected all of the pieces, but we most certainly have the infrastructure for being a great city. And I would really like to see us move towards application of some of what we gained from those sessions. It's one thing to go and, you know, get excited about what you're hearing, but it's another thing to actually bring the materials back and, um, make the, the time worthy of the financial investment. Um, I know I've taught the council president Bonner about some of the things that she'd like to see implemented through the youth advisory council, and there are definitely some things that I'd like to see, um, one of the, a piece of that is going to be this meeting with Path Foundations, um, and just making sure that not just for today, but for the future. Our city is sound, and it is sustainable, and it is a place that people truly want to live. And those of us who, uh, don't necessarily have a choice, that we're proud and happy for where we're at. So, I, I don't know how we necessarily move forward with that, if it's just sharing thoughts and ideas via email, making it an agenda item. But I, I, I think there was some. But I, I, I think there were some very salient points in those discussions that if we really took to heart, it would definitely move us forward.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Vincent, thank you so much. Councilman?
Yeah, to piggyback on Councilperson Vincent, uh, we had one gentleman, he acted from Henry County, uh, Rainer. And he did present on technology. And he had Henry County as a city, it's, it's all the way up. Technology, you know, is it very important, you know, it's, it brings it to another level, and he was, he was very good. The second was, was, uh, about gun control. Um, where you posted, uh, different, you know, government dealers, and that, that's important, church, you know, city cost, things like that. And so information like that, uh, is very important. And Karen, uh, Councilor, uh, Bonner, I don't know if she goes state on the youth. Uh, it vows, it's a lot of information about children, about, you, you can sort of expand when you get to you.
Calum?
I have a few things, um.
Go ahead, Roger.
I was wondering if Mr. Whitaker's been paid yet for the, uh, audit.
I don't know, I have to do some research to find out.
Pardon?
I don't know, I have to do some research to find out.
How about, uh, if you would, uh, let, let me know when you want, he may have, I, I don't know.
I don't know, I have.
We, we need, we need to get that out.
And I don't know, I, I just wanted to comment because one of the classes that I had was, uh, the fin, municipal finance too. And we had been grossly overcharged for the services. And Mayor, I did ask you for, uh, some of the, the information, and Leslie has, has sent that back. But there's some more information that was shared during that session that I think is very important, uh, to this body relative to moving, uh, forward with an auditor. But in terms of what we were charged for a single audit, it far exceeds anything that, that the industry asks for.
I, uh, wanna go back to the budget in a minute, because of course, uh, naturally I support our police and fire and I support hiring them. But there are some loud items that I don't support. Uh, we're spending a tremendous amount on parking downtown, and we have made no effort to get a handle on it. I have a question for the city manager, does the city of McDonald pay the power bill for all subdivisions?
Power bill in terms of the streetlights?
Streetlight.
Um, not all of them, but a lot of them do. And we've been wanting to lean that baby, just like I've been wanting to lean every other crazy contract and, uh.
And we pay those lights whether they're burned or not.
Yeah.
So I suppose if a subdivision, if it's bank owned, I'm sure we're paying that.
Roger, I can speak to that because it was a recent action by this man, council, prior to your coming on board, that we did have a subdivision that didn't have any lights, and it posed us a safety issue because the, the, um, the developers, the owners did go bankrupt. So I know exactly what you're talking about, but it is a, a safety issue. And what we voted upon was to have Georgia Power, or is it Central Georgia EMC? Yeah, yeah, to turn those lights back on, but it was also Lakeland and a couple of other, other, so, yeah.
Matnolia Village was the one that was having really high traffic.
So when people say that we're spending four hundred thousand dollars on lights and subdivisions and things like that, that's false information. That's just a matter of, of calling the city administrator and asking what actions Mayor and Council have taken.
But we are spending, regardless of the cost, I don't know, uh, we are spending money for lights if we don't need to be, power bills if we don't need to be spent.
No, we do when it becomes a, when it becomes a safety issue, and there are no lights in that area at all, we do. We have a, we have, I, I believe that the charter says the safety, health, and welfare of the community is the municipality's responsibility.
Uh, uh, Matnolia is the one that I'm, the, the most familiar with, that we did. Because we had such high in and out traffic, and that's, you know where that is, that's why I was telling Roger.
Well, it's something that does need to be addressed in the future, just like.
And that was the proposal that we would go and try to figure out, and which to address it.
We've been looking at alternatives to do that, and, and, and obviously having to go through a process of establishing basically a streetlight district. Um, my goal is to try to get it done before this budget, we're, we're only able to do that. But in essence, that's what we're basically going to do, and eventually what I'm hoping is we'll, every property will be assessed a certain amount of money to cover the costs of the streetlights, and so that would be on everybody's bill. And so it won't be on the city per se to pay it, it'll be like the county, I pay as part of the streetlight district in my subdivision. That goes to the county, county has a streetlight district, they established years ago. Um, and so any new subdivision of the business of districts are assessed a very small amount of money that covers overall costs of the rest of the streetlights.
But we're going back to just saying thing, if a subdivision goes bankrupt, I mean, uh, then bank, this bank on. So are we collecting anything from the bank for these subdivisions?
Property tax, that's about it.
Property, we are collecting property tax.
Oh, banks pay property tax, they don't ever want you to put a lien on their property, they pay the property tax, don't they?
I think you'll find that Henry County at one time suspended, uh, property tax on that, on bank owned property, but I may be wrong. That's, at least that's what I read.
Oh, I don't know.
But I know out of Lakeland, Roger, about two years ago, for Fred King, Billy Duckett, there's sixteen homeowners out there. And they had agreed, uh, to pay that light bill if they got a lot from us, and that's been two or three, that's probably been three years ago. And I don't know what status is, a few more have been built out there. But, uh, but they had agreed to do that, cause as you said, the other, all those other two hundred lots, uh, were in default. And they needed some, one of them worked for the county, he was a county police officer. But I, uh, may, maybe I, I can check and see, but I, I have run the impression, they told me sixteen property owners, if you would give us, uh, write a letter, and I think it's the EMC, and tell them, uh, that they would put a charge on that, on the month of the bill. And I don't know whether that's materialized, I'm honest to God.
And I remember when, because it was in my district, that this issue came up and it being the council did vote unanimously on this. The, the problem was that there was not a system in place which could have addressed this. And so that's what staff was charged with.
In essence, there's a certain percentage built out by which they intrigue those subdivisions over to the SPOSS. So every district in, in the city, our subdivision was gonna be paid for, it's not just one district, it's all of them.
So there's something we can work on. As the budget included hiring a full-time permanent employee as an accountant.
As an accountant?
Yep.
Uh, no, we have positions that are already existing that are current positions that came open through retirement.
So you haven't added a new position?
We added a budget analyst twelve back in twenty twelve. That's the only position we added.
And that budget analyst is who?
Uh, Mr. Bernard Bridges.
He came on as a team.
He came on as a team, but he's been, he's still considered a contract employee, but technically he's going to work within that, within that frame for that position.
So at what point did he come, did, did he become permanent?
He hasn't been permanent. We're going to advertise, the goal is for us to advertise that position after the whistle, when we get the whistle report.
Okay, and I believe we said we were paying forty thousand dollars for trailers that doesn't meet our requirements, or the bathrooms were broken. My question is, um, why are we still paying rent on these trailers if they don't, if they don't meet our standards?
Why don't we fix them, we just, they got to become maintenance headaches over time. But we're still paying because we leased them, we're getting purchased. And I don't know what the purchase would be now, or if there's a buy or pause on the contracts or not.
I'm just wondering to know if they don't.
At some point, if, if we don't, if we don't pay it, then we have to move, we can get rid of it, and I'm going to, we still gotta move that stuff somewhere else. And right now, we don't even have a problem with it, it makes sense. I know some people said we can move them down here to the public, public books, but you're talking about court probation being side by side working. So there are people driving up and down the street to coordinate business that technically right now, they're just walking back and forth between the offices.
I'm not talking about moving them, I'm talking about getting them up to standards that, that we ran them, could, we had a certain standard.
They're, they're not that they're, that we've had maintenance issues as they have, as they have aged, which costs us above, it costs us. But same thing with the church building. I think we added a new roof, and if you, I, I wish y'all would go over there and walk around the building and see the condition that building is in, because it would make a lot of you out. And you would see what your staff is working on. That it is close to being the part of, of the city of, of the Dallas County.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. It's nice.
Oh, the night, yeah? I, I, you have a W?
I'm gonna get to you, ladies first.
Okay, well, um, I'm happy to know, um, um, Evelyn and I, um, words that we would, would have you, and I'm really going to miss you, we're good friends. Um, but the, um, something that I think we're all gonna be enjoying, and I know that Ms. Chloe is, um, we're going to have our dog park. It's going to be open on August the second, and I'll get us time and place. It's going to be a Saturday, uh, that we'll be opening the dog park. And, um, I wanna tell you that, um, um, staff, especially with Public Works, has really made a, a heroic effort out there to complete. We've had tremendous donations in the community, um, right down to even sod and things of that nature. So we're going to have a very nice dog park. If you wanna go by there, you can, um, take a look at where we are now, and, um, the fence is up. And, um, we'll have our signage up within, uh, the next week and a half. And, um, that was also donated, and it was donated by, um, the public services, so.
Janice, Janice, Janice. Thank you, and just love your lady. Ms. Bonner?
Um, I don't have much, um, nothing but that, um, I, I can contribute with this. And this is sort of I G M A, was a, I'm accepting time down there in GMA. I did learn a whole lot, um, and it kind of goes in fact with next generation, which we had in two thousand twelve, thirteen, and this year is two thousand fourteen, um, as was by design. Um, I thank you guys for your support for the, um, the Southern Youth Advisory Council. We will be accepting applications at the end of July, the end of, um, August. And, um, we're looking forward to working with you guys on this year. You'll start seeing enough people at your city council and meetings. They'll be participating with Roberto, Quentin, Quentin Tate, as well as, um, in the Christmas parade. We'll be working with, um, community, schools as well. So they're excited, I'm excited, and I want to thank you guys for your support.
Thank you, Karen. Councilman?
I don't have a lot either, I, I, I never got a chance to work with Ms. Craig, but I did live next to her for many years, growing up, so I'm gonna miss her. And, uh, also prayers for that family. And I wanna thank Ms. Casey for Roberto, I know you're ready to get this over.
Amen.
Uh, every year, but it seems to go great, and, uh, gonna be out of town that week, so I'm not gonna attend it, but thank you for your hard work, hard work on that. Uh, last thing, I really, Fred, I guess to you and staff, but really want to see if we can push through this park on the street to get it done. It is a, it's something that.
Can you name it this morning?
It is just, uh, I know it's no one's, I'm not, I don't, I don't mean to be pointing fingers, and I'm not pointing fingers, but we've gotta get it done.
Yes, sir.
We, uh, it has been a long process, not just to get to this point, I mean, we're almost in the three-year mark, I guess.
Which one?
With, it's a name, that's the other.
Renan Park.
And that's the other thing on that, is that at some point I'd like for us to sit down and actually officially name it. I, I don't have recommendation right now, but it has a name. I guess it's kind of technically called Cleveland College. And I don't think it should be called Raner Park, cause it does confuse with the development of there. Um, you know, I don't want it to, to be, look like it's part of the HOAs, uh, investment, cause it's for the city, for the city citizens. So two things, let's push through, get it done, I mean, all I can help. Secondly, let's all think about, you know, name for that, for that area, officially name it. And that will be gone on the twenty-first, and see, uh.
I, I'd like to just simply add to that, that we recently had a donation of sod for the, uh, for the Raner Park, it's not the Raner Park.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anyway, so whenever, when the lot finally gets regraded and cleaned, and all of the brickwork and sidewalks are put in, we have a sod that is, he's not here, but he's extremely excited about because it's a year-round sod, and it's, um, heat and drought tolerant. And, um.
Is that about it now?
And, um, I'm very proud of, of the, of the donation.
And, uh, as you then mentioned, let's remember, uh, Evelyn family out. And she was working Secretary of State, and I was at City Hall, and Muzette were tied, and, uh, Ryan Hutton, not many of you would know Ryan, but, uh, with seven, yeah, and Robert Rufus, but we had an opportunity to interview her, Secretary of State, she worked for the enforcement, and she came on board, and did a marvelous job for many, many years. Has a wonderful family, and, uh, I don't think Janice, I believe she said we don't want to go into detail, but we'll certainly keep y'all, each of you informed. It'll be a memorial served at some point in time. But what a talented lady she is, and she's certainly been this, I know she's been in your press, she certainly has been in ours for many, many weeks. Uh, only other thing I have, uh, is Friday night, uh, if you wanna see, uh, a group of old time old bands, and that goes back to fifty-five. They've been practicing for about, uh, a number of weeks on Saturday, start out in Cummins. Uh, the youngest is fifty-five, oldest is eighty-one. However, there are twenty-five total, but by virtue of July the fourth coming on Friday, some will not be here. But they have assured me, they have filled the gap, it'll be a patriotic performance. I would encourage you, if you can, to come to the square and, uh, and, and, and see, I've got a young scout, an older scout troop in McDonald, nineteen thirty-four. He'll have a pledge, uh, Charlie Cock and Cock and Doll, the National Anthem, and then God Bless America, Councilor Stew, without an indication. We'll have ice cream first, ladies and gentlemen, so we encourage you to come.
Ms. Janice, say something before you close out.
And, uh, yes, Janice?
I just also want to, um, Dale's family, Fred lost his sister last night.
Oh.
Fred, not his sister.
Her master?
No, she lived in Los Angeles, she was a retired, um, professor, uh, senior professor of UCLA, she was there, now forty years.
Yes, I know.
She had a full life, she's, um, um, she's, and yet, she's.
Dale, I lost my aunt, so.
I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. All right, uh, Roger, and Johnson, you have a question about Jimmy. I'll make sure tomorrow, we'll include this on the nineteenth of May, I'll have a check up tomorrow and send to him, and I'm a thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So you left it to you, that'd be done. Having said that, thank you so much for your attention, ladies and gentlemen. Wish y'all a good fourth, and I hope you can come to the square. And then go for the journey.